Want to go through a couple of the.
I'll just feel you do a roll and then we turn it over.
All right. She's. No, no, that's, that's, yeah, no, it's okay. Um. All right. Well, folks, it is six thirty, so I am just going to let folks know. Is coming in now. The, um, the meeting tonight is being audio and visual recorded and will be available at the planning and development website. Within twenty four hours after this meeting, if there's anybody who's on the call that has questions about the content tonight. Or, um, any of the materials that are discussed can feel free to call the planning and zoning office between eight AM and four PM. Monday to Friday, uh, eight six oh, four, 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 five, eight, one, three, and we'll be happy to help, um, answer questions. And with that, Mark is going to take a quick roll and then we'll turn it over, Joe, to you to get things started.
All right. Okay, the roll call, Joe Bunkley.
Here.
John Bashaw.
Here.
Karen Barnett.
Here.
Tim Bleesdale.
Here.
Greg Nassid.
Yeah.
And Joe DeBono. My dear, okay.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, we will now call to order the, um, meeting of the planning and zoning commission of the town of Waterford on this day, February twenty three, two thousand twenty one at six thirty PM. Uh, Karen, we will seat you for Joe DeBono.
Okay.
Uh, moving on to item two, approval of the February ninth, two thousand twenty one meeting minutes.
I'll move approval of the minutes. This is John Bashaw.
Thank you, John. Do I have a second? All second. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
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 Uh, opposed? Okay, motion move for approval of the meeting minutes. Uh, item number three, receipt of applications.
Uh, yes, we have an application that did not make it on the agenda, so I will read it into the record. Uh, PL twenty one dash one, request upon theater TV Incorporated in Douglas Z Resort. Owners, Sig Con Associates LLC applicant for site plan approval to locate a multifamily development on property. Located at three eighty four and three ninety four Willets Avenue Extension. In accordance with section sixteen and eighteen of the zoning regulations. It has shown on plans titled Waterford Woods Site Development Plans. Date at eleven eighteen twenty revised to ten twenty one. Action required. Four twenty nine twenty one. Uh, the application was received in order and I will schedule this for a, uh, uh, for a presentation to the commission at the appropriate time.
All right, thank you, Mark. Okay, item number four, discussion of draft regulations, uh, Jordan Village and the urban agricultural. Let's start with, um, your Jordan Village. Abby, you want to take that?
Sure. So the Jordan Village Zone District, we've talked about a number of times over the years and I think what we're trying to do is, really try to, um, bring this forward, move it along and decide whether or not the commission is, is ready to go forward and, and, you know, look to adoption of a specific, um, village district for Jordan Village similar to what occurred, um, with the, with the Civic Triangle District. I'm just pulling up my screen share here. So we can go through some of this stuff. Okay. So as folks may recall, this, this conversation has been on and off for a number of years and was interrupted by some, uh, enforcement issues and some, some relative pieces going on in Jordan Village, and so we took a little bit of a break. And I think coming back into, I see, and I think, you know, with, with COVID going on, things were sort of quiet, but I have a feeling that over time, folks are going to want to look at opportunities to, um, increase the types of things that could potentially happen in Jordan Village and make it a little bit more flexible and a little bit more supportive of, of kind of, um, you know, enhancing the, the great anchor businesses and, and the elements that are there. And, um, and allowing folks some flexibility to look at some new kinds of uses. So this is essentially the draft that was the last one the commission saw. We haven't really touched it since, I would say, you know, over a year at least. Um, it's just sort of been sitting waiting for a time when, when we had to work on it. And, you know, we've tried here to look at as many uses by right, um, associated with the Jordan Village District, some new uses that didn't exist and, and don't exist in the regulations today. But most specifically artisan production, um, sort of small craft, uh, production experiences that we've defined further in, in the definition we provided. And then the other piece which has been, I think, sort of the most public face of the Jordan Village, um, element here is this concept of the small event venue. And, and that one is, um, you know, was added in with the anticipation that anybody in the district could use it, but the fundamental purpose, as everybody I think is pretty well aware, was to support some of the functions, um, that the granite house would like to be able to move into and to be able to, to do with their facility. So, um, so that's, that's again, we'll, when we can go into the ins and outs of that particular, um, element as, as we go forward. We added some limited, uh, mixed use and multifamily residential in here by right would be three units or less, and I think that came out of some commission discussions from before. Anything larger than that would, um, would need to, and I think we need to see here with a, a hand signal as exceeding three units per lot, we'd need to go through a special permitting process. We may want to put an upper cap on that, um, so we can talk about that. But again, we try to keep things sort of at a scale that, that is compatible with a village, um, experience. So there's still, you know, rear and front yards required, pulling things up to the street, allowing folks to, uh, enter into a party wall agreement through zero, uh, side yard setbacks. Things like that, trying to still, again, keep fifty percent of the, the coverage, um, provisions that are, that are there now, um, again, trying to keep some, some green elements here and not sort of, you know, make this an, an urban block. It really is supposed to maintain sort of that historic, uh, scale and feel. So that's, um, the sort of idea here. In order for, I think, much of any change to happen in Jordan Village, this off-street parking and provisions for shared parking is, is really going to be critical. We've employed the same techniques at Mango Point and in the Civic Triangle District, so we have, um, some precedent for this and, um, we've only, we haven't had many folks take advantage of it yet, but I think enabling it to happen is, is really the critical piece here. Um, much of these other things are, are, um, standard language relative to environmental protection and site plan approval signs, that kind of thing. One thing that's in here, because we're looking at this as a village district, um, by state statutes, there would be design guidelines and required, uh, design review board review of applications that go forward, and one thing that we are still working on is those design guidelines. The ones that were drafted for the town are, to put it nicely, they're onerous, um, and, and I think they're more confusing and, and would take more time to sift through than is, is necessarily worthwhile for us in the permitting process. So we'll be coming forward, um, you know, with a revision to those for you, and we'll talk about those specifically because they're, again, you know, there, we, we don't want them to be overwhelming, but we do want to make sure that, that we are preserving that village and historic scale. And the other piece, this alcohol language was written prior to our new, um, alcohol consumption and separation distances, so we may revisit this and just make sure that it works for the district. In terms of boundary, um, we have looked at this, the, the Jordan Village Zone District as a little bit different from the Jordan Village Historic District. The Historic District encompasses this, this red outlined area here and is, is broader that, you know, includes those structures and, and historic elements, um, that make up that national district. The blue line is what we would be looking at for the village district itself where the uses would be modified. The reason for this particular corridor here, um, is, there's a couple of things. One is, we didn't want to go too far up North Road and enter too far into a residential district with some of the, whether it's, um, you know, commercial gallery mixed use kind of uses, we're trying to preserve the neighborhood that is there. If there are folks here who want to opt in, they can certainly do that either at a later time or before we actually finalize these boundaries. Uh, but we're trying to sort of keep the corridor to the extent we can where there's already commercial activity happening or, or could happen in the future, or as in the case of some of the properties, um, you know, getting toward every lane, for folks have expressed an interest already in being part of the district. That will leave us with some residentially zoned land, um, in a little pocket here, and we'll have some village residential pockets surrounding the Jordan Village Zone District. But I think the, the, the purpose of this, this cutting it off where it is, is not to allow sort of the creep outside of the village proper. And then we can kind of talk from a policy decision about how far we think that extends. And the last part of this, um, is the, the definition that we felt would be necessary to add into our regulations in order to support this, this potential change. And so we've added in the artisan production, bed and breakfast, which we don't have in our regulations right now, and then small event venue, um, again, which was put in place that we would design where the granite house wants to go. So that's, that's sort of the, the overview. In terms of process, this is really an informal conversation to reacquaint everybody with the history of what was going on, talk about where we are now and where we want to go, see if there's any uses for elements that people's opinions have changed on, or for those who may be seeing this for the first time, if you have questions. And then talk about, um, you know, sort of our outreach mechanism, yeah, to sort of clean this up. And, you know, I think send it out to those folks who are certainly in the blue, but those who above the blue. Um, you know, so they understand what is, what is potentially happening before a, a formal application comes to the commission. So we would spend a few weeks, um, you know, giving folks the opportunity to comment, to, you know, give staff, you know, any questions or, you know, answer any questions that people may have. And then we would put forward an application package that would sort of start, um, that review, that formal review where we would advertise and hold an actual public hearing. But we do, because it's been so much time, we do want to give people the opportunity to comment again before that public hearing is held, um, and before the commission may, may choose to adopt. So, um, so I would admit, I would imagine we'd have another, you know, month or so of public interaction before a formal application, um, came forward and, and we scheduled a public hearing. Again, and that's all sort of predicated on, on, you know, where the commission is tonight and, and the direction we receive from you.
All right, thank you, Abby. Does anybody have any questions? I'm just looking at the, uh, the additional definitions for section one there, Abby. Small event venue.
Yep.
Would that mean that the granite house would be, uh, able to perform the functions that they were denied?
Yes.
Okay. Just looking for clarification, that's all.
Yep, there, and there may be, uh, you know, to be part to, to qualify as this kind of a facility and these assembly uses, there may be building code elements that they have to modify and meet, um, because again, their use would, would change from sort of that single family residential to an actual commercial facility, and so there may be things that they have to do outside of these regulations. But yes, this, this was intended to support the kinds of things that they were hoping to do.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any questions, comments?
Yeah, I just have a question. Joe, you said something about that they were denied, that they wanted to do. When was this? Did I miss something or?
Um, when was that, Abby? About a year and a half ago?
More than that. This goes back to like twenty sixteen.
Before I was on the board then, okay.
Or there were, there were some enforcement actions taken that wound up, um, going through the appeal process at the zoning board of appeals. And that was twenty sixteen, early twenty seventeen, and that was the reason, um, that this process was sort of, we pulled back on this process because we needed to get sort of enforcement pieces to, to end before we went down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think it predates me.
It's been going on for a while.
The, the one thought that I had in, in looking at this and it's kind of related to the, like the small event venues and bed and breakfast. Is there any ability or thought about having some limitation on the number that can be provided in the district? You know, if, if for some strange reason, uh, six facilities, I, I know the granite house is really only one, but let's just say, for example, if there were six applicants to have that event venues, is there any way or thought that we could have some control on the number, the total number in the district?
I think we'd run into a little bit of an issue with treating different properties in the same district differently. There might be a multi problem there.
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, I've never, I've never done a saturation, a regulation that has sort of saturation point. It was sort of use was allowed, it was allowed and the market drove it, and if not, I think we can put separation distances perhaps an actual standard maybe we could consider, um, and see if that would, would hold water. Um, and so, you know, sort of, you can't have more than one bed and breakfast within a certain linear distance or something like that. And then set that distance in a way that would, we calculated out to not oversaturate. Um, but again, you know, it, it was one of the, one of the reasons again that we, we reduced or sort of narrowed down this boundary of the district was, that was one of the considerations was that you wouldn't wind up with a host of bed and breakfast well into a neighborhood.
Yeah, and actually that's what triggered my, well, it was not so much the small event venue, but was bed and breakfast and the way that it's defined. You know, being a private house in which portion, it could be a, a very small portion of the building, it's maintained and held out for temporary overnight lodging and, you know, if anybody who want, it seems like a pretty broad definition, anybody who wants to hang out a shingle and make a little extra bucks by, by renting out a couple rooms seems to me could become a bed and breakfast in that district, then. You know, again, that, that was my one comment or thought when I looked at this. And, and for that, we could tighten up the definition a little bit if we were concerned about.
Yep.
Abby, one question, and I don't know how this relates, but as John was talking about the bed and breakfast, how do we differentiate a bed and breakfast from like an Airbnb?
So the bed and breakfast is, is really, let's go back to the definition. Um. So it's the morning meal provision, and we didn't, we didn't put in here the owner or, or, um, manager occupancy, because sometimes that, that is something that happens with bed and breakfast, that could be one limiting provision. Waterford has historically looked at the Airbnb element as, um, sort of the continuation of a single family use in which the entire property is used in the same manner as a single family property. It's one of those issues that you start pulling the string and it, it tends to blow up quickly, so communities kind of handle this in, in one of two ways. They go after them very aggressively, um, or they, as, as we've been sort of advised, be illegal to do up to now is, look at them as though it's an, it's a single family, extension of a single family use. The bed and breakfast is intended where, not the entire building, it's a portion of the building. So there, you know, it's meant to be, you know, you could have multiple guests in different rooms, it's not meant to be, you know, sort of a, a, the whole house. Take it no, um, it's meant to be something where a, a service is provided, but be the morning meal. We may want to, um, you know, narrow the, or put more, um, clarity in this relative to whether we believe a bed and breakfast or something where proprietor has to be on site. So that's one way we can also differentiate. But it is, it's, it's, the Airbnb is a tough issue.
Okay, no, I mean, I, from what I've seen of this whole Airbnb thing, it's like, it could be an Airbnb tomorrow or not. With the bed and breakfast, it seems like more of a, a substantial business that would advertise and.
It's intended to be, I mean, this is really sort of intended to support those traditional B and Bs where you may have, you know, different folks coming down to breakfast in the morning who, you know, and you're, you're gathering, having your muffins and going off to, um, you know, go, go have your day at the beach or wherever you're going, but it's, it's really intended to function as sort of that more traditional, um, venue.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, lodging.
Yeah, specifically lodging that were, it could be broken up by occupants who are not necessarily part of the same party, whereas typically Airbnb is, is going to be a whole house, whole property, um, experience.
And is there any anticipation that the Airbnbs might also end up being like a small event venue if someone rented out the Airbnb, the, oh, not the Airbnb, the, the, um, bed and breakfast for like a wedding or something?
The difference would be they, they wouldn't have the ability, because there's a distinction here, to host those types of events without getting themselves specially permitted as a small event venue. So it's possible that, um, that a bed and breakfast could transition into a small event venue, but they're intended right now as separate uses. Again, in part so that event venues wouldn't overwhelm a very small district, but the use is available if another property is, you know, is, is interested in, in taking advantage. During the special permit process, each of those will be obviously handled and, and, you know, dealt with relative to the special permit findings. But the way that, that this is written does not specifically enable a bed and breakfast to hold an event on their property. So the ceremony or the, you know, hosting others who are not staying at the property for a portion of the event, of the event really isn't contemplated as part of the bed and breakfast definition, the way it's written now. Now, if it's something, you know, that, that folks are interested in modifying in some way, I think we would probably want to chat about that.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I support having them be separate and they would need to let us know if they were becoming a small event venue.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the difference here is that, um, if they were to become a small event venue and that definition held, then the entirety of the property has to be let out at once and, and you wouldn't have that sort of bed and breakfast, um, sort of community element of, of different folks coming to rent out single rooms in the bed and breakfast facility. So it would sort of change the tone and tenor. So it's really, it's a matter of the business plan that, that somebody might want to follow.
Okay, um, anything else on, um, Jordan Village? Excuse me. So, um, what's the next step here, Abby?
So the next step would be, we would craft a letter and send it out to the folks in the district, I think with a copy of the district boundaries and, and showing folks where, um, where this would be proposed to take effect in with properties would be, um, you know, would be in the district. And then give folks an opportunity to, to get back to us, you know, so give them email addresses and phone numbers and say, you know, before date X, please, you know, give us any comments that you have, um, and we'll, you know, what we may also do is set up, um, a Zoom that, so, you know, folks could sign up for ahead of time, so that it's not sort of a, a huge, um, dynamic of trying to figure out Zoom bombings and all that kind of stuff, but you know, kind of that, that public meeting for folks who are in the district and might be interested in, in more information about how it might affect their properties. Um, and do that, and then come back to the commission after we have made some recommendations and incorporated any comments that we think are important to, to modify the regs and, and note for the commission what those are. And then once we have your blessing on a draft, uh, we will bring it forward for a formal review, um, subject to the statute and go through with the actual public hearing.
Is the consensus of the, uh, commission to move forward with that?
Uh, this is John. Yeah, yeah, but I, I think that makes sense to me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, that was Greg. I'm for it. This is Tim. Sounds good.
Karen, you, you on board with that?
Yeah, that's fine. Sorry.
Okay, great.
Took me a minute.
So it looks like, uh, that's the next step we should take here, Abby, and, uh, we'll keep this thing moving forward. Okay, uh, we move on to the urban agriculture. You want to run with that, Abby?
Bear back up. All right, so the urban agriculture element is another one that, um, is, is coming out of some interest that we've had along Clark Lane, um, specifically to enable smaller farms that, that are under our current hundred and twenty thousand square foot threshold for farming in the zoning regulations. Um, and to, to enable, um, activities on smaller residential lots at a limited scale that allow folks to engage in certain farming activities without, um, perhaps creating the kinds of impacts that, that folks might associate with larger farms that, that would, um, impact neighbors and, and those types of things. So what we've tried to do is establish this as an overlay district, as sort of a trial area in the R twenty zone, um, sort of in this general space. And the reason for that is that there are already limited agricultural operations that are happening in that space or may be able to happen in the future. As folks know, the, the facility on Fog Plain Road, um, the, the miners parcel we're here, the Taylor's operation, that's, that's, um, at the top of the, at Clark Lane. There's also the opportunity for community gardens, whether it's at the middle school or at potentially Stanger Farm, as we look at the, the potential limitations and opportunities on that property for, um, new uses and recreational elements. So there seem to be sort of a cluster already of activity that is, that is sort of indicative of an area that might support this. Um, so the intent here was, again, to keep it, you know, sort of contained to start, and if then the commission decides there are other areas in town in the future where this might be reasonable, then to move it along. There, we didn't want to do something that's, um, sort of infiltrating into all residential districts from the very beginning, because we thought that might be number one, too much. And number two, might, you know, introduce uses in neighborhoods that might not be ready for it or may not have this kind of, um, agricultural leaning already in them. So, so that's the reason for the overlay piece and the reason for the location. What we've tried to do here is distinguish between a farm and the urban farm. The intent here is to go from the minimum, minimum, or the, this minimum parcel size requirement of twenty thousand square feet up to, uh, where a regular farm would take over, which by the way, is a use by right in the residential district anyway. Um, trying also to limit the types of uses that can happen. So in a, in a farm, one could keep livestock and, and have some more intensive uses, um, for any, you know, dairy purposes, um, any of these other elements. Here in an urban farm, the intent is that you're really only growing food or ornamental crops. Um, it is, it is not intended to be a place at which livestock is specifically hosted. That said, our regulations do have separate, um, standards for the keeping of horses and for the keeping of poultry and rabbits. So those elements, if they were, you know, had separate permitting, could potentially take place on an urban farm, but you're not going to have a chicken farm. You may have, if you have a small lot, you may wind up with three chickens. Um, and still no roosters and, and all of the elements that we already passed with our poultry regulations. The other piece here, we've tried to add some definitions that, that the town currently doesn't have. We, we added some elements in terms of farming types. Um, again, as, as farming practices change, we want to sort of be supportive of, of sort of the agricultural roots of Waterford, but also allow for the monetization of some of these things. And with a smaller footprint, there may be opportunities, um, where folks are looking to erect a small structure to engage in some of these other farming techniques, which have, you know, fairly low, um, you know, footprint on the land and can blend into a residential neighborhood, but still produce, um, the kinds of, of crops that, that folks are looking to sell. So that's, um, sort of the purpose of that. Some things in here, um, you know, we have had, you know, definitions or, or references to some words in our regulations that we don't provide, um, you know, definitions in our current section one four, so things like a piggery pasture, those types of things, really trying to just tighten up our, our agricultural definitions. Um, the other element that, that, so that's the urban farm versus farm distinction. Urban farms would only be allowed, again, in that overlay area. Um, as would community gardens, and the community garden element, um, is really meant to be different from an urban farm, and urban farm is intended to be a small scale, um, commercial enterprise. The community garden is really meant to be that traditional community garden that folks may see that maybe one or more plots may. The community garden is really meant to be that traditional community garden that folks may see, that maybe one or more plots managed by a group of people, a nonprofit, that, you know, is really, they're other, growing for personal use, because they don't have burdened space at their house, or they enjoy the, you know, the experience. And they're growing their tomatoes in a, in a public place, basically. It's held, it's sort of held out and open to the community to rent plots or however it might be managed, but it's really meant to be that, that sort of you get, you get your garden plot and, and you do your work there, and there's that community aspect to it. So that's, that's really the, the purpose, and then we've tried to add some standards in to you know, talk about how we might actually permit and force urban farms and community gardens. And I did notice after this went out that there's a reference to urban farm in the community section here, so we'll, we can certainly go back and, and, you know, modify some of this stuff. But again, it's, it's meant to clarify for folks what would be necessary in applying, and then how we might go forward. Now, the last thing I'll talk about before I, I be quiet. The one question that we have been kind of batting back and forth this stuff is the concept of whether the urban farm is the primary use of a property or if it is an accessory use to the residential use in the zone. And, and it's a little bit, sort of, in, in terms of what that may mean is how we treat single-family homes and urban farming activities that happen on the same property. And, you know, is the single-family home sort of assumed into the urban farm, much as a farmhouse would be assumed into a regular farm as part of that operation? Or, do you have to have, or, and then that would also enable folks, if it was not a single-family home on a property, they could farm that property as a standalone use. If it's an accessory use to a single-family, then you have to have a single-family home as your primary use, and the urban farm is sort of a secondary thing. I think it's cleaner to have the urban farm be the primary use and, and run it that way, and the, the house is, whether it's used in a single-family home or a, an office space, you know, or a space for the manager of the farm, even if the property owner isn't living there. You know, there, there's certainly, I think, opportunities for, for different uses of the house, but they have to support the farm operation, whether it's the owner living there and farming or somebody managing. So, we've been batting that around in terms of what is preferable, in terms of how we would, that, we really haven't settled on it for a recommendation yet. We wanted to hear from you about what you thought. So with that, I will, I'll be quiet and see what, what folks are thinking.
Thank you, Abby.
And I believe I saw, I think John Taylor, I saw him on here, I think there may be some folks who are interested in this issue in particular, who may have some, some thoughts for the commission as we go forward.
Okay, just one question I have, Abby, when we talk about all operations related to the urban farm shall take place in rear and side yards. Paragraph D and four A dot one. Definition of side yard would, would stop at the front of the house, is that correct?
Right, so there's no house.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so I guess what I'm trying to get at is, nobody could use the idea that we could continue out the side at the width of the house from, with the house to the property line. Does that make sense?
If you have a house on the property, that you can go to that, that line where you could build to. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, okay, yes. In other words,
Yeah.
It takes the, the east side of a house. If, as you project all the way out to the street, say the fifteen-foot setback or twenty-foot setback, whatever it is, that does not apply once you go beyond the front of the house, correct?
That is correct, because this is, this is a side yard, not a required side yard.
Okay. So, all right, I just, I, I'm just trying to, you know, you know, get a grip on, are we going to wind up, well, obviously we're not going to with this statement in here, is the whole property going to be, you know, agricultural? And in some residential areas, I would say that would be a problem.
And that's, that's what we've been wrestling with too, is if it's, if it's a primary use and there is no home on the property, and I think there's only two properties in the, in the overlay district that Mark was analyzing it, that's really, that, that were vacant, that would, this might be a problem on, or not a problem, but a consideration. In the future, if somebody were to demolish or want to have more farming space and not have a single-family home, and they got rid of a house because it wasn't, you know, in particularly good condition or whatever else, we could run into a scenario in which there is no house on the property in the, in the zone, and therefore, it, you know, would be, if, if it's a primary use, it'd be allowed as just an agricultural property. And so that's, that's, and, and I think if that's the case, then I think this operations statement, which was really crafted, I think, with single families in front and, and urban agriculture and that kind of in mind, I think that could, it could cause some confusion and perhaps some important problems. So, so it's one of, so deciding on this concept of is it a use on its own, or does it have to be secondary to, an accessory to a single-family use? Or a, or a use that's allowed in the district? Is it an important distinction to make?
Just, my, my, my comment on it, this is Greg, I, I would be hesitant to make it a primary, is my thought.
All right, thank you, Greg. So, so even Abby, in, in the case you described where a house was taken down, and now we just have an empty lot. So technically, at that point, that whole parcel could be used as urban agriculture?
If, if urban agriculture is introduced as a primary use allowed in the zone district, then yes, that could happen.
Okay.
We say that urban agriculture may only be adopted as a, as an accessory use to any of the permitted uses in the district.
Okay.
And you'd have to establish the primary use before you can have the accessory.
Okay, so if it were the accessory use, then if the, the building lot was empty, what would we use for front, you know, for a front yard? Would we then look at the front setbacks as opposed, you know, to, that would be the closest they could go out? Or the furthest they could go out to the road?
Yeah, I think we'd have to draft something like that, or, or come up with a very specific setback for the use.
Well, yeah, if, if, if the urban farm is going to be accessory, then you can't establish it unless there's a right? So, in other words, if you, if you have a vacant lot and, and urban farm is established as an accessory use to a principal use of the land in the zone, you would not be able to even do the urban farm unless the use was established in the first which would be any of the uses that are allowed in that zone.
All right, great, thank you. Anybody else have anything? Questions, comments? No? Okay. So, okay, the question is now, next step on this one, Abby?
Well, so I think, I mean, we heard some feedback relative to the primary accessory use, and so I think if, if we're looking at this as an accessory use only, then I think that we need to go back and, and do some tweaks on the language of the regulation itself. And, and make sure that those are, you know, sort of supportive of and work for folks who may be using them, and then also you know, again, this will be a similar thing, is that, you know, when the commission feels like this isn't a forum to share, we would do something similar in which folks in the district would be made aware that the commission was going to discuss it, and we would set up the ability for folks to give us some feedback, get some thoughts on it, and then and then go forward with a, a formal process in the public hearing. So similar, similar process to Jordan Village, but, but like we said, establishing this as sort of primary, or this is, you know, yeah, primary accessory use is, is really sort of the biggest policy decision around it.
So, does, does the feeling of the commission have one way or the other, whether it be a primary or accessory? I myself would like to see accessory.
This is John, I think I'm probably more prone to the accessory use as well. And, and one other quick thing, I just had to note. Is there any particular reason that with respect to community gardens, there's required dedicated off-street parking? Whereas as far as the, the more of the urban farm, if there's a farm stand in the front and it's actually operated as an urban farm, is there any concern about cars being on Clark Lane and being on Fog Plain and being in the way of the traveled way? Should there be a thought that maybe the parking even for the farm stand should be off-street?
I think we can, I think we can clarify that as it relates also to the, the farm stand by right opportunities that we have in the, in the zone districts now, which does require that folks have to be able to pull off. The, the re, I mean, the, the more intensive off-street parking for the community gardens, really, if you've got, you know, lots that are, I mean, you know, if the operating plots being sort of let out to individual groups or people, making sure that there was enough to support those folks. But I agree that it would be better specified in here, how those farm stands may operate.
Good point, John, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is Tim, I also favor the making this sort of an accessory use.
Okay, thank you. All right, so Abby, I guess, like, Greg, how do you feel?
I think it's, I think it's definitely accessory use. I'm concerned, because if, this is the map where it would be, right, the green? You have all the greens?
The green, the green would be the zone or the overlay area in which it would be allowed.
Yeah, I, I see a lot of small neighborhoods, and I, I just, I'd feel more comfortable with accessory.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Greg. How about you, Karen?
Um, I think with, with the intent being to allow people to utilize their properties, I think it, it leans toward the accessory. It's implying that the, the house is there already, and they're just trying to utilize their land, so.
Yeah.
It's accessory.
All right, great, thank you. All right, so that's pretty unanimous there, Abby, and how we feel on that.
That's great, that's, that's super helpful. So we're gonna, we're gonna take another stab at this and have it for you at the next meeting, so that we, we tailor some of this stuff specifically to the accessory use, and we'll, we'll run it back out to some of the folks who are in the district who have shown an interest and, and go from there.
Sounds good, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number five. Discussion of draft affordable housing survey.
All right. And this is basically what we did was, we modified the, the survey questions and some of the intro language relative to comments from the last meeting. And then what you see on the screen before you is something that Glenn Chalver, who's our consultant on this, these are, are his comments, green is new language, red is stuff that he has crossed out. Not huge changes, but some, some language that kind of softens, again, the affordability part of the conversations. Turn people off before they get started and, and keep, keep that kind of going. And so what I was hoping for is to just get some feedback on the intro language, and if the questions are in line with where we want to go, we can, we can put this together and, and get it out on the street. I think it probably needs to be out for a few weeks, and so in the interest of moving the Affordable Housing Plan along, which I know you've expressed an interest in seeing that, that kind of come to fruition sooner rather than later, we're hoping to, to kind of get some direction from, from you all about getting this into Survey Monkey and, and getting it out on the street. So, it would go, and just for a procedural element, it would go out in Survey Monkey, we'd be posting on sort of social media, on the town websites, trying to get it out in the senior newsletter. We would be looking at utility bill cycles to see what times up, and, and then go from there.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, anybody?
Uh, this is John, I, I actually, I like the, the changes that were made to some of the intro language. It gave, to me, a better explanation for why, why this was being done. There's a couple typos in it, but other than that, I, I thought it was an improvement from last time.
This is Tim, I, I also like the direction it's going.
All right, good. All right, Abby, I guess we can move forward on this one as well, right?
I'm just looking, there's somebody who's on. Okay, so what I will do, if it's okay with the commission, I will make the changes that Glenn has suggested, again, some clarifying pieces. Again, differentiating apartments, that's important in Waterford specifically. Get it into a format and get it out there. So the next thing you'll see is the, the actual Survey Monkey element.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, moving on, item six would be correspond-
No, we don't have any.
I'm sorry, do we have any correspondence?
We have none, no.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry for the interruption there. And item number seven, administrative review.
Nope, I think we've gone through that and our other items.
Okay. Item number eight, the most popular one on every agenda.
Do it, Jerry.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, thank you very much. Everybody, have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
All right, guys. So, Abby, like I was talking to you before about that density thing, so you're thinking that their density requirements are less stringent than what ours are?